Good evening and welcome to our second night for the Candidates Forum. We're pleased to have all eight of them here with us this evening. We'd like to thank Jean Marzenkowsky for helping us out and using the Veterans Building. We'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the Board, and Robin, who is our CEO, Executive Director of the Chamber. Before we get started, we are in the Veterans Hall, and Jean asks that we say a Pledge Allegiance, so please all rise to say the pledge. Thank you. Tonight's format will be here for approximately 90 minutes, so we'd like to end at around 7:30. We have questions that are prepared by the Chamber of Commerce, the Board members, and members of the community. We will also, we've asked a few of you, or all, any of you out there, to write questions, and we'll talk about that in a minute, and have them come around and collect those. The format for tonight will be each candidate, they are sitting in alphabetical order. Each candidate will open with a statement of two minutes, give us some information We'd like to get through as many questions as possible. Did you hear that?
Yeah.
She's asking if you'd stand.
I don't mind.
Alan, is that going to work for you back there, there standing? Okay, thank you. Again, we'd like to get through as many questions as possible this evening, so we want them to move through it, please no interruptions. They get one minute to answer each question. You have a timer, candidates, your timer is Bonnie right there. Same format as before, at 30 seconds, she'll raise a 30-second paddle, and at one minute, dun, da-dun-dun, you get the stop paddle, and please, please stop at that point, again, so we can get through as many questions as possible. In the audience, please no applauding, comments, boos, let's respect the people who are up here, and again, try to get through this as fast, not as fast as we can, but get through so we can have as many questions as possible. I see a few people standing in the back, there's still a couple chairs up here in the front row, if you'd like. I mentioned the candidates are seated alphabetically, and if you'd like to pass your questions in, Nina and Janess, raise your hand. If you have any questions written down, please, I'll collect those, and go through those so we can ask those questions in a little bit. We have Melanie Bagby, we have incumbent Mary Ann Brigham, incumbent Bob Cox, Sandy Crayford, Keith King, James Lukini, Jason Turner, and Paula Renn. We're going to start with Melanie Bagby, two minutes, tell us about yourself.
Well, good evening, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's forum. I'm hoping that this second forum is going to allow us to go into more depth about our views, and help voters see who we really are, and the qualities that we bring to the table as candidates. This is an important time for, yes ma'am. You know what, my, I have very little, I'm going to have to do this, you guys might, we might have to remove the tape, we could have an AD person come up and help out with this, that'd be great. Pull it, no, I'm going to pull it loose. Okay, don't count this against my two minutes, Bonnie. There we go.
Got her, Jean.
There, that's going to work, there we go. So where was I? Let's see, second paragraph, I think. This is an important time for Cloverdale. Our community is facing several challenges, and chief among them are how to find new ways to fund infrastructure projects, and how to implement smart development, so that we transform our built environment to serve us in an information-based economy. Planning, smart development, and the creation of a healthy economy and a healthy community have long been my passions. That's why I served on the Cloverdale Planning Commission, and the Sonoma County Economic Development Board, and was one of Cloverdale's appointees to Climate Action 2020, where we helped create a foundational document of the best business and governmental practices to meet our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, while creating sustainable local economies and healthy citizens. One of the things that sets our region apart, and makes us the envy of other regions, is the recognition that the economy and the environment are not mutually exclusive. In fact, they complement each other and directly affect our quality of life. I invite you to check out my voting record at www.cloverdale.net, in the Planning Commission minutes, and see for yourself the quality of my questions, my voting record, and how I conducted meeting as its chair for five years. And be sure to review my list of endorsements at melaniebagby.com. Join the conversation with me on Facebook and Twitter.
Thank you. Mary Ann Brigham.
Hi, thank you all for coming out on this incredibly wet night. My family and I have been members of the Cloverdale community for over 30 years, and we were in business here for over 20 years. In my years as a member of the City Council, I have been instrumental in the completion of many projects, including the Highway 101 Bypass, the Senior Center, the Cloverdale River Park, Clark Street Park, Cloverdale Performing Arts Center, and more. This gives me a strong foundation to continue helping build a brighter future for Cloverdale, and I will continue to represent all of our citizens and work to bring them the services they need and deserve. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Democratic Party, State Senator Mike McGuire, Assembly Member Jim Wood, and Supervisor James Gore. I would like to continue to be of service to my community on the council. The main areas concerned for me as we go forward is I'd like to continue to provide more affordable housing. The development of the Times Square property at our center entrance to the city, I think, is really critical, and we're just getting into that now. The expansion of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Facility, I think, is also another critical project which will kind of meld into the Times Square property if all of that works fine, and I think it will. I also, and we're in the middle of bringing health and human services into our community. What started as a very small office has now blossomed into at least 14 full-time jobs coming up here to Cloverdale, so that everyone in Cloverdale will get the services they deserve. I'd also like to set guidelines for the emerging cannabis industry in an equitable way for everyone, for the industry and for all of the citizens, and I'd like to create a can-do attitude for welcoming new business into Cloverdale. My door is always open to hear your concerns and suggestions, and thank you for continued support.
Thank you. Bob Cox.
Good evening, I'm Bob Cox, and I am the incumbent here, one of the incumbents, and I appreciate everybody being here this evening, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the American Legion for allowing us to use the hall this evening. Why do I want to return as a member of the City Council? I have been very invested in our community. I've been in public service now here in Cloverdale for over 10 years, starting on the Planning Commission, working on the general plan, the urban growth boundary, and setting guidelines in that direction for years to come, 2025. It seemed like a long time off then, it's not so long now. There are projects that I would like to see finished, that I've been working on for many years, especially the Alexander Valley Resort, that came to us in the Planning Commission in 2006, and been working on it ever since, with some gaps in between. I'm very invested with the Latino community here in Cloverdale. I'm working on bringing them into mainstream Cloverdale, I'd like to see them participate in our public affairs, our Planning Commission may be eventually getting on the City Council, I would like to see that very much. As mentioned from Mary Ann, the Times Square project is part of the Four Corners project with the Police Department, we'd like to see that completed, very much so, and in the future, thank you very much, I would like to see more participation from all of the City Council on all of the countywide projects that we are involved in. I serve on three committees right now, I'm a Director of Sonoma Clean Power, Waste Management Agency, and the Russian River Watershed Association. Please, before I go, please vote yes on Measure Y, that's our library, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy Crayford.
Good evening, I'm Sandy Crayford, and first of all, I apologize for the last forum that I couldn't attend due to a family emergency. Well, very impressive. The only thing I can tell you is that I have a very positive attitude for our town. I love Cloverdale. I've lived here since I was a freshman, and prior to that, when we were doing business on the coast, my parents had a restaurant, and we knew a lot of the business owners here in town, so it was easy moving here. I raised my children here, I am, when my family had some problems, this town stepped in. It was wonderful. I am the type of person, I'm not familiar with a lot of the committees, but I am one who will go with a positive attitude, and if someone says, "No, it can't be done," I will find a way. If there isn't any money, let me tell you, I will find a way. I am the type of person who digs, and searches, and finds. I've worked for the, I'm sorry, the Cloverdale Schools for over 30 years, in fact, when the school was unified, I went to work there as a student, so it was 47 years, in fact. I had a great mentor, Mr. McCauley, and he was always telling me to just try, do your best, be honest, be truthful with people, and that's what I intend to do. I commend everybody up here, and they're all good candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, going to go to the other side, or come over here? Keith King.
Hi, my name's Charlie Keith King. Unfortunately, on the ballot it says Charlie K. King, so there might be some confusion. My family's been here since the mid-'40s. My mom grew up on First Street, or East First Street here in town, I grew up mostly on Mulberry Street here in town. I started to work for the City of Cloverdale at 19-years-old as a reserve police officer, and then full-time at 21-years-old, retiring last year with 33 total years of service with the city. I have the history or background knowledge of many things about this city, and why things have been done, and how things have been done. I know where there's problems with building properties that could potentially be costly. I understand how city government works from the inside, since I've been involved in everything from the budget process at the Police Department, right on through. I served as a detective for the department, a traffic officer, a patrol sergeant for about 15 years, and eight months as the interim Chief of Police. I love Cloverdale, I plan on staying here, my family's here, we've raised our daughter here, who just started this year as a kindergarten teacher in Jefferson School here in town, so my ties are to Cloverdale, and I care about where Cloverdale goes, and what happens with it. We do have many problems with Cloverdale. Economically, we need to improve the business community, to draw people or businesses here that will stay, and that will bring living wage jobs, so that's going to be one of my biggest focuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. James Lukini.
Good evening, my name is James Lukini, thank you all for coming this evening, on this rainy eve. I am a, I'm a citizen of Cloverdale, I've lived here for six years, and I have about 20 years' experience in the business world, primarily in the wine business. I work for Francis Ford Coppola in Geyserville, and that's what brought me here to this town, and I have a vested interest in moving forward. My resume does not have a lot of City Council work on it, or city here, work here in the city, but I am excited, and I love this town, and it's been incredible to be here for the last six years, and I want to see the community move forward, and the city move forward, become stronger financially, and to really work towards what's happening in the next five, 10 to 15 years. As Sonoma County evolves, and becomes a stronger destination for both tourists and people looking to live here, we should be at the forefront of that. Now is the time for growth, and for change, and to do it in a smart way, with a business plan, and a way to look forward into the future. I also have a vested interest in town, because the company that I work for has over 60 employees that live in this town, so when the chance came to run for City Council and be a part of what might be hold the future, I thought of them and their families, and how important it would be to make sure this is a great place for them to live as well. So, like I said, I look forward to bringing to the table my years of business experience, as well as a positive and collaborative attitude to work with the existing council, and with business leaders, to see Cloverdale move forward and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Jason Turner.
Good evening, my name is Jason Turner, and I grew up here in Sonoma County, near the town of Forestville. I met my wife, Robin, who grew up here in Cloverdale, and after a few years of living with our in-laws, we purchased our first home over off of Pino Way, here in Cloverdale. We have a child on the way due in December, and I knew that this is where I wanted to raise my family, and lead by example for my son, and be a good citizen. If you were led to believe that Cloverdale is financially better off than it has been, I really invite you to look at why. Increased taxes and a decrease in city services will likely be what you witness. In fact, in his October 13th Weekly Review, our city manager was quoted saying, "Revenues were higher than the city projected, with the greatest gain in the general taxes category. Also, spending was below budget," end quote. In other words, the city has been getting less and doing more. I don't believe that's the right way to treat its citizens. I do want, I do not want to lean on your income, I want to bring money to Cloverdale responsibly, without jeopardizing its charm. I believe we need to seek out projects that will generate large sums of revenue, like hotel tax, as this can be used at our discretion. I believe I am the leader to bring outside dollars to Cloverdale for all of its citizens. I do believe we have our own paradise here within Sonoma County. We appreciate its diversity, its beauty, and potential for responsible economic growth, but that growth is slow and coming. I want to go find it. I want to search out what it is that we as a town really want to become, and not lose our identity within Sonoma County. I won't promise you this overnight, but what I can ask of you is to please allow me four years to show you what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Paula Renn.
Good evening, and thank you for coming out tonight. The good news is our city is headed in a good direction, and has made tremendous strides recovering from a difficult recession under the current staff and council. If you attend tomorrow's City Council meeting, you'll learn just how much the general fund has improved through the efforts of the present leadership. Many members of the community are telling me they want change. I hear that they want new ideas and new faces on council, and there's nothing wrong with that. However, change for the sake of change is not always useful. Effective change has purpose, and in this case, change may sometimes mean staying the course to get things done that we've been working on for a long time, which is bringing business and jobs to Cloverdale. You see here numerous enthusiastic Cloverdale citizens interested in being part of that change in our city, and that, that's good, because it's giving you the voters choice. However, rather than voting strictly for the person you believe will make the most change, I suggest you consider the changes they propose, and vote for individuals who convey a clear purpose, and whose ideas are best suited to our community. I also would suggest that you consider voting for someone who can not only bring new ideas and change, but who has been consistently engaged in some manner with city government before this election. This is an individual who understands the scope of the job, and how municipal government operates. That person, or those persons, will hit the ground running, and be effective throughout their term.
Thank you, Paula. Before we get started, the temperature in the room, is it too warm, too cool, okay? It's warm, air warm pretty consistently. Mr. Jean? All right, then, candidates, we're going to try to use the mics in front of you. So we're going to get started. Melanie, you were able to open with your opening statement. So, Mary Ann, first question will be to you. We will rotate, it will come back to Melanie, the second question. Bob will start, and so on and so forth, so everyone gets a chance to start. They'll have one minute to answer the question. We do have our timer up in front of us here, and I do have quite a few questions from, I do have quite a few questions from the audience also, so we'd like to get through these if possible. Do you mind if they sit down? Okay. Mary Ann, you ready? First question. According to the Sonoma County Office of Education, in 2013 and 2014, that's the most recent that we have, Cloverdale Unified School District had the lowest average SAT scores by school district in Sonoma County. What impact does the City Council have, working with the school district, to improve these results?
I think a lot of people have the feeling that City Council and city government has something to do with the school system, and indeed, we do have a liaison that goes to the meetings, and the school board meetings, but you've got to understand that there's a school board at the schools, so we are not, like, if I washed, if I went in and said, "I've got the solution," they would listen, but you have to give them the responsibility for the schools. Do I think we should have better schools? Sure. I think we should be putting as much money as we possibly can into it, but it isn't money out of our general fund. Don't be confused, that's not what the City Council does.
Thank you. Bob Cox.
Yes, thank you very much. Similar to what Mary Ann has mentioned, I happen to be on the school subcommittee, and with that, we iron out problems that the school department may have, that may be impacted by the city, to something that the City Council can help them with, but we make no decisions on the school, or the SATs, or the performance of the students, that is up to the school board to tell, to organize the teachers, and that program themselves, so we are really out of the picture when it comes to the performance of the students. That's the teachers and the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy.
Regarding the AST, you're correct, the City Council really doesn't have much control over that. One of the things is the demographics with the schools, and the Spanish-speaking. What we need is for the schools, if you can volunteer there tutoring, that's where the community comes in. We need more volunteers. I, in fact, had a little guy come to me, and before long, he brought me five more kids to tutor them after work at the library. So, it's not really the City Council's responsibility, they do work with the schools in any possible way with safety issues, but as far as the education part, it is the community.
Thank you, Sandy. Keith.
I have to agree with the other members up here, that the school district has their own budget. They spend it where they feel is best. The city has collaborated with the schools, with the school resource officer, an officer teaching great at the school, and the gang awareness, so the city does work with them on that level, but actually, on their scholastics level, it's up to the school board to decide how and where they're going to work.
Thank you, Keith. James.
I think it's interesting to see how we all have kind of a way that we think about how the council interacts with the school board. I think the most important thing is to think about collaboration. Collaboration of ideas, collaboration of resources as much as you can, I'm not saying for the city to give the school council money, I'm saying to help them work through it, and help them, give them ideas, and work as a city to do what we need to do, through volunteer programs, and getting people involved. It's the example we set as the council, and as the leaders of this community, that help the community move forward.
Thank you, James. Jason.
I don't want to repeat what my fellow candidates have said about the influence that we have over the school board's budget, but I must agree that we have to collaborate and continue to work with. We don't want to silo any sort of aspect of our community, and what I mean by that is, they are not their own entity exclusively, just as Cloverdale is not its own entity exclusively. Whilst we cannot always offer financial support, the people who are in office can provide advice based on experience that they've had, especially if we see some new individuals enter the school board, as you've all seen signs around town, there are non-incumbents running this year. So with current city council members having four, sometimes two years, and excess of experience, they can work with the new school board members, if they are voted in, to let them know what successes have worked in the past, and what has not. So collaboration of minds and information, not necessarily finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Paula.
I'm actually glad this question was asked, because I was a little puzzled to see that one candidate's materials referenced improving our schools, and as was said earlier, we do have limits as city council members, however, I will say that our council members have looked for opportunities to be supportive to the children, and to interact with them. And one important opportunity was in helping with the safe routes to school, so that children can get to school safely, and also, I know that, I believe Bob Cox has been involved in some of the events, like the walk, ride, and roll to school, I think Carol Russell might have also been involved in that, to help teach children how to get themselves to school safely, and I think those kinds of interactions are both fun, and helpful, and good for the community.
Thank you, Paula. Melanie, you'll be the last one on this question.
Well, when I was serving on the EDB, one of the things that we do is we produce financial reports on industries in specific cities, and one of the most shocking statistics that I saw in the report about Cloverdale is that Cloverdale citizens pay more for private education per capita than in any other city in Sonoma County, and that can, points right to the leakage that we have of students, because we don't have programs that attract and retain them. And it's just as important for business and economic development to have attraction and retention plans as it is for schools, and I'm happy to see some of the candidates for Cloverdale School Board moving in that direction, and the council needs to do its best to support that direction.
Thank you, Melanie. Bob, you're going to start with the next question. I'm going to read it a little slowly, and I will suggest you might want to make a couple notes on this. The question is, the city has six subcommittees. You will serve on two of them if you're elected. After I ask a question, I'm going to list the subcommittees for everybody.
Okay, the subcommittees?
No, I will.
Oh, all right.
Which, which interests you, and why do you think you'd be an effective member? The six subcommittees are the Airport, Finance, Administration, and Police, that's number two, Fire, Planning and Community Development, Public Works, and School. I can repeat those, if anybody raises their hand, I can repeat those for you. James? The six subcommittees, the first one is Airport, Finance, Administration, and Police, Fire, that's the third one, separate category, Planning and Community Development, Public Works, and School. And to reiterate the question, I know it's a little long, the city has six committees, which we've just listed, you will serve on two of them if you are elected. Which ones interest you, and why do you think you'd be an effective member? Bob Cox.
Thank you very much. Currently, I serve on two of those. Currently, I serve on two of those. I serve... I'm the chair of the airport subcommittee. Actually, Carol Russell is currently. I have been on it since I've been on the council, and we swap year to year as the chair. I'm also on the public works subcommittee, and actually, I'm on the school subcommittee right now, currently. I've been on the planning CDA, and so I've had my fill. I've been on the finance committee. So I've run the gamut. I prefer the airport. The second one, I would have to vacillate a little bit between planning, CDA and public works. So, thank you very much.
Thank you Bob. Sandy.
Out of these six subcommittees, I would choose the finance part of it due to the knowledge that I have from the schools and the different funds. One of my main concerns is, is that going over your funds for the city, I did not see a reserve fund, and that is badly needed. Where you put money aside for repairs for the future. You can't keep not addressing items. For example, the roads. You need to put money aside. Secondly, would be the schools. There's safety concerns. One of them, I spoke with Mr. Cox, and that is the crosswalk between School Street and Cloverdale Boulevard. Working there in the office, I've heard many a times where people have screeched their brakes and just barely missed a child or a mother with a carriage. Those would be the two subcommittees.
Thank you. Keith.
I think I'd prefer the police administration subcommittee. In my job, I did a lot of work on... Thank you. City ordinances, the personnel ordinance. I was involved in hiring at the police department for many, many years. Interviewing people, making the decisions on how that all worked and who we hired. So I have a really good background on the administration of the city and how it all works. The other one that I'd be interested is the schools. I think I've had a really good rapport with the school district, and I think I could make the most impact there.
Thank you Keith. James.
Thank you. The first committee that would... Subcommittee that would interest me the most is the finance piece of it. With 25-plus years in business and working a lot with profit and loss statements and looking at profitability, I'm very interested to see how our... How all of our finances are working out as a city. It kind of differs who you talk to. Some people say we're in the green and it's good. Some people say we're in the red. Some people say there's no money left. And I'd like to get to the bottom of this. I think the community and the public really have a want to know what really are the facts around the city's finances. And then, second, I'd like to be part of the planning commission to see how we can maximize in the next three, five, 10 years, businesses coming to town and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you James. Jason.
Thank you. You know, looking at all six of these subcommittees, I really feel like I'm a flexible guy. I could bring something new to each of them. But to choose two, I really like the idea of planning development and marketing our city. It's something that I feel I would be proficient at. Going around to surrounding communities, learning from their successes, seeing if we can adapt from their challenges. Another thing that I see on here is public works, because I honestly believe one feeds to the other. If we can generate revenue for Cloverdale into our general fund, which we may use at our discretion, we can start paving those roads that, you know, sometimes the taxes from gas aren't providing to us anymore. And we can start looking outside the box for things that our town really cries out for. Again, I wouldn't turn my nose up to any of them, but if I had to choose my two favorite, those would be them. Thank you.
Jason, thank you. Paula.
I'm like Jason, I'm a little bit flexible on these. I would most prefer one of these three. Airport, finance, admin and police, or public works. Finance, admin and police and public works are our biggest expense areas. So those are very important to me. I also would like to make a little bit of a correction. Our finances are, as I said before, in pretty good shape. And we do in fact have a reserve category. And for those of us who have been attending as many of these meetings as possible since spring, I... You know, I just... I don't want to steal thunder from city council, but I'm going to. Our reserve account for the general fund is almost at 25%, which was our goal when we started working on that. I remember when it was about $7,000 and we were lucky to have that. So there is some good news out there and things are turning around, and I just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you Paula. Melanie.
Actually, all of these areas interest me, but in particular, I think I'm attracted to planning and community development. For one thing, I get to be the liaison to the planning commission, and I think I can, as a seven years on the planning commission, it's something that I could be up and running quickly on and, you know, hopefully provide some feedback to our current commissioners. And then secondly, I think I would like to be interested in finance, administration and development. Finance is where it happens. That's where they make the decisions that affect everything else. And in administration, they also make very important decisions about operations. And with my business background, I think I can make some contributions as the city is transitioning and choosing technologies to move themselves forward into the future.
Melanie, thank you. Mary Ann, you'll be the last one to answer this question.
Alright, well, I've been on every one of these committees at one time or another over the years. Right now, I'm chair of finance and admin and police. And Paula's said a little bit about this, but it was pretty brutal for quite a few years. We cut city hall hours, we closed on Fridays. We had to make a lot of hard decisions because of the recession. Things are coming back now. Measure O was passed. And at this point in time, in 2014, we faced $177,000 ending balance. That scared the hell out of me. That's not enough money to have as an ending balance. We are gonna... We just got our paperwork and we ended this year at $1.6 million ending balance. So the party isn't beginning yet, but we can start to now restructure and rebuild all the things we had to cut. I feel really good about where we're at now. I'd like to continue at where we're at now, and I gotta stop because she told me to. And the other one is planning and community development. I love that one.
Thank you Mary Ann. Sandy, you're gonna start this question. Proposition P. Proposition P simply provides the city of Cloverdale the mechanism to charge a tax on cannabis-related industries. It does not... It does not legalize cannabis in the city of Cloverdale. On that thought, Cloverdale supports multiple restaurants, multiple convenience stores selling alcohol, auto repair, multiple grocery stores and other businesses. Cannabis dispensaries are being considered for the city of Cloverdale. How many do you think we should have? And where should they be located in zoning or areas?
That's a hard one, Ron.
I didn't write all the questions.
Where should they be located?
Well, the question is, is how many should there be?
How many should there be?
And where should they be located, zoning or area?
I really don't have an idea on how many or where they should be located. But as far as controlling the legalities, they should be located here within the city. Because you still want some control of it, some legal control of it. I'm not too familiar as to what other cities have done with it, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Keith.
Are we standing still?
Yes, please stand.
I hadn't put much thought into this, so... I don't think the city would need any more than two. And then I think a good rule would be to look at how some of the other states have used the alcohol law and limit how close they can be to schools. No more than, you know, 1,000 feet from a school. Or no, excuse me. So less than 1,000 feet from schools. Or some number like that. So we keep it at least away from school areas, the influence of it. Plus, the marijuana industry is actually dangerous. So I don't think we'd want some of that activity around our kids. There's robberies, there's all sorts of stuff that can happen with it. So that's where I would stand.
Thank you Keith. James.
Thank you. Number of dispensaries, not quite sure. Probably two to three at the most. Where should they be located? They should be located in the central business district with other businesses. Let's not hide them. Let's not make this something dirty and something bad that people go looking for on the outskirts of town. That's going to make it... Demonize it. And I really think that if there are laws in place and we plan this correctly, that the tax revenue that could be generated would be something that the city needs and could benefit from.
Thank you. Jason.
I hope the person who wrote this question can excuse my answer, but I really don't believe it's up to me to decide how many. I would invite anybody to come to the planning commission or the city council if someone were to ask for a permit to have a dispensary and speak their piece. Everybody in Cloverdale should have their say about whether they want a retail store or a dispensary within town. What we have seen so far is presentations on commercial processing of cannabis. What I would see that happening is in commercial zoning, where they can be regulated as far as air pollution, noise pollution, and getting rid of their excess goods that are used for the process. So again, I really invite the town. If you don't want dispensaries, please be heard. If you want dispensaries, please be heard. But as far as the manufacturing goes, I truly believe we can keep that reasonably located within city limits without jeopardizing the charm. Thank you.
Jason, thank you. Paula.
I really feel that we probably should restrict the number of dispensaries in the community. We're a small community. I don't think we want to be the cannabis Mecca. I do also feel that, you know, what I would really like to see if cannabis is going to be an industry in this community is the manufacturing and other areas of the cannabis industry. And those can be located in industrial areas away from children. And those are big moneymakers that could probably yield, you know, good tax money for us and make use of our industrial spaces. So that's kind of where I would like to see our emphasis, or that's where my emphasis would be. But certainly, if people want a couple of dispensaries, I'm okay with that.
Paula, thank you. Melanie.
Well, I guess the question really is not just how many dispensaries do we want. The question is, how many dispensaries do we want? How many testing labs do we want? How many distributors do we want? And how many growers do we want? And the cities, as it's set up in state law now under medical, we decide. And so I think that the best thing to do is to have a series of town hall forums and get your feedback. I don't know exactly, you know, how many we need, but I think that we need to have each of the types of businesses right-sized for our community so we're not overwhelmed. There are going to be certain permit types that just aren't going to be appropriate for Cloverdale. And specifically as to where they should be located... Sorry, I'm a former planning commissioner. Retail and retail, commercial and commercial, industrial and industrial, and ag and ag. And let's get it out of our neighborhoods.
Melanie, thank you. Mary Ann.
Okay, I think the first part of that question was how many.
Yes, somebody's asking how many?
And how many dispensaries? We're just talking dispensaries here, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, dispensaries, two. You can't have one, because that wouldn't really be fair. Two is all the demographics in Cloverdale will accept. Or you'll have three and one of them will go out of business. So I think two is the maximum that we can have. And that would still remain profitable. And I am part of the cannabis ad hoc committee with council member Russell. We've been to, oh my god, 20, 30, 40, 50 meetings on this subject in the county and in the city. There's gonna... There has been some meetings already here in Cloverdale, about Cloverdale. Many of them actually. And the county is wrapping their program up and will be issuing licenses by next month. If not, November, December. We're in the middle of trying to... Of talking about... Stop. Thank you.
Thank you Mary Ann. Bob Cox would be the last one to answer this question.
Thank you very much. In the words of another candidate from a previous meeting, what she said. Yeah. I totally agree with Mary Ann. That's what we'll do. The city council will determine, I think, the minimum. The maximum would be two. And what candidate Bagby mentioned, that retail, retail, industry, industrial, agricultural and agricultural. That's really plain and simple. Thank you very much.
Bob, thank you. Keith, you're gonna start off answering this next question. This one comes from the audience. When I say I'll give you a second or so to think about it. It's a big question, but it's a very important question about our future. And that is, what is your specific plan for tourism?
Cloverdale's not an ideal location for many activities. When I was involved at the police department, they were looking for ideas for their website. And one of the things that I came up with was maps of bicycle routes throughout the county using Cloverdale as a stopping or a starting point. So there's many activities such as that. Lake Sonoma is a big attraction. The river. So I think just getting out the information of what we have available for people to see and do is very important. We have one of the most beautiful downtowns around. And we have a lot of activities such as Friday Night Live going on. So I think just getting the word out would be my biggest move.
Thank you Keith. James.
Thank you. I was appointed to the Sonoma County Tourism Bureau about five years ago, so I'm glad someone asked this question. There are many resources out there in the county that are working to bring tourism dollars to Sonoma County. One being the Tourism Bureau, Economic Development Board, Visit Santa Rosa. There's many organizations that we as a council and a town could work with to help bring people to town and to expand upon the tourism areas that are here already. The incredible beauty we have and all the things that we have to offer. But it's important that we have a plan in place to market and bring people here based upon what we have to offer. There's no sense to sell something that we don't have and then not deliver on the goods. And so it's important to get a plan into place to make sure we have everything that we promise to offer visitors who come.
James, thank you. Jason.
I realize a lot of people were born here, but I invite the ones that were not to remember their first time they came to Cloverdale. As a tourist, I myself was that same person. Once you see it, you fall in love with it. You look out your window, you see the rolling hills, you meet the people, you see the stores, the restaurants. Let's let people know. Marketing. Marketing is a great thing. I'm happy other candidates talk about marketing. Marketing is huge. Marketing is how you get your name out there. But we have to give them something to offer as well. And so when we talk about Alexander Valley Resort, let's make sure we keep it beautiful, within Cloverdale's charm. The same thing that each of you who came as a tourist and ultimately decided to live here, what won you over? Because I can tell you what won me over. The car show, the pancake breakfast at Granger Hall, citrus fair. I love this town.
Thank you Jason. Paula.
Well, I've been here 14 years and the entire time, we've talked about marketing Cloverdale, having an identity for Cloverdale. And everybody has different ideas about what that is. It's very challenging to get us all together on that subject. However, one of the things that I feel we're lacking, and I'm hoping as we move forward fiscally, we can afford somebody to be a media manager for us. Because neither the city nor the chamber has been able to get their hands fully around being effective on social media. In fact, I just started a hashtag #VibrantCloverdaleCA and have been posting the things that I love, that I come in contact with every day. And I would encourage any of you who are online and familiar with Twitter or even with my Facebook campaign page, write in and say, "This is what I love about Cloverdale", and see if we can't get a little something going. It's little stuff like that that doesn't cost money, but that we can get behind. Thank you.
Paula, thank you. Melanie. Melanie?
Well, I think the first thing that we need to do is support our chamber. And I'm not pandering to the hosts. I really mean that. We've got to support them in developing their outreach programs that promote tourism, not just to people outside of Cloverdale, but within Cloverdale. We have a lot of stuff to offer here. And we can take advantage of the local tourism from folks in Geyserville and Hillsburg. In fact, I've already heard that they're coming up here because they're a little overrun. So they enjoy going to Plankton. They like, they enjoy coming to our local events because they're not as crowded. I think that also we need to take advantage of the county resources like the tourism board and improve our presence on digital media and outreach. And that's going to go a long way to promoting tourism here in town.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Well, I have to kind of agree with Paula on what she was saying about little things. We need to really support the businesses that we have. When I started the pub, what, 15 years ago, when we designed the beer label, I don't know if any of you guys have noticed it, but it says Cloverdale in two-inch letters on every single bottle of beer that's on shelves all over in California now. So every time we make a choice or have a decision to make on what to tell people, how to show people, we just have to keep pumping Cloverdale, 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 the Performing Arts Center. You get a good reputation on something, people will come and see. We get people now from Marin, Ukiah, Eureka, all over the place, just coming for performances there. You've got to give them something. Friday Night Live is another one. People come from all over for that. So you have to give them what they want to see, or why are they going to come?
Mary Ann, thank you. Bob?
Thank you. This will resonate a little bit with our moderator this evening. I'm kind of the watchdog, along with Ron, that we have to remind the county and other cities and publications that Cloverdale is on the map and it is in Sonoma County. Through, also through my associations with the different boards that I serve on and the organizations that I attend, mainly in Santa Rosa, Windsor, throughout the, throughout the county, I have developed a relationship with a lot of the city councils of the other cities. And they're always asking me what's going on. And they can't believe that there's always something going on in Cloverdale. And I push that myself on a continuous basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy?
Regarding the specific plan for tourism, I don't believe that we need to market it. I'm sorry. But people, that's the best communication out there. People will, like Friday Night Live, when it first started, it was small. Now it's like, it's huge. Hillsburg started, it was a street fair many years ago when I was working there. It got so large that they did away with it. There's so many things here in Cloverdale to do. There's the airport, we can skydive. There's, like I said, bike riding, swimming in the river, Saturday, sorry, Friday Night Live, Citrus Fair. Where else can you go where it's safe? This is a safe town for tourism.
Sandy, thank you. Next question. This will be Keith, you'll start the next question? I'm sorry, James, you'll start the next question. Thank you. The Latino community is an integral part of the Cloverdale community, and many efforts have been utilized in the past to further involve the Latino community in many additional facets of Cloverdale, such as politics, volunteer organizations, service clubs, and more. What would you do to improve communications and participation of the Latino community in Cloverdale?
I think the important key to working with the Latino community here in Cloverdale is to really reach out and make the connection with the younger generation. The kids that are graduating high school or going off to college and gotten their degrees and returned to town, these are the folks that we want to begin building relationships with. We want to have the chamber work outreach, working with the businesses, the Latino business community, and really carving that out. Being on the chamber board, we've worked towards that a lot with the decoration of the windows for the Day of the Dead instead of Halloween, as well as working, the chamber worked with the Latino Day celebration that we had just a few weeks ago, which I feel was a great success in trying to bring the two communities together. We need to do more of that and utilize the folks that we have in the community that are willing to work with the chamber and other businesses.
Thank you, James. Jason?
Yo me gusta, right? Yeah, you gotta love it. Anyway, I married into a family that has Latino folk in it. And, you know, they have a set of core values that we must not forget, that we all share, family, sports, community. It's a grassroots effort to get any demographic involved, not just one in specific. And so I think the harder we work to include them, to participate, and understand that they're already, they're already here, they're already everywhere. And they're here to stay. We love them. We love the culture, we love everything that is new that they can bring to the table. Why stop now? Thank you.
Jason, thank you. Paula?
Well, this is when I wish I could pull a Tim Kaine and answer this in Spanish, but I don't speak Spanish and it's one of my big regrets. I think there are a lot of things we can do. And one of the things that I have been doing lately is trying to go out and, and visit the businesses that are operated by Latinos. I think if we shop in their markets and, and go to their bakeries and, and interact with them, I think we can become closer to them. And I also agree, and I think the service clubs are doing a good job of this, and we can partner with them in reaching the next generation of Latinos in Cloverdale and getting them involved. They will bring their parents in because it's part of what they do and they need their parents' support. So I'm, I really want to see us continue doing some of the things we've done and, and do more.
Thank you. Melanie?
Well, you know, this has been very challenging and I think I've heard a lot of frustration by city staff as to how to get the Latino community more involved in city politics. And I think that the key here is that to understand it's not just enough to be linguistically fluent, you have to be culturally fluent in order to reach out to folks who have a different background from you, who are from a different place. And we need to build one-on-one relationships with folks. I mean, that's just something that I do every day, and I kind of take for granted. But that allows you to not just leave the door open, but to invite people in. And I think that's, it's a responsibility of not just the candidates here, but everyone in the room to, to try to do that.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Okay, a little story. Years ago, I had, I was at a League of California Cities thing that was here in Cloverdale. And I was giving one of the, a lady, I'm not going to mention names, from Mariner Park, I believe, a ride from the rest, from the, wherever we were to the restaurant. And she kind of nudged me with her shoulder and she said, "Show me the Latino ghetto." And so I put her in the car and I took her to my house. And I said, "Yeah, this is, this is what they consider the ghetto here." And she sort of looked at me like she was, like I was kind of crazy. And then my household is kind of the rainbow coalition. There's Chavez's, there's, there's a lot of different people, a lot of different colors, a lot of different persuasions in many ways. And I think it's just not seeing it. If you just don't see those things and just hire people or be with, like, Yave Guzman is our artistic director at the Cloverdale Performing Arts Center, local boy, and she's, I gotta stop again. But I love that he was hired.
Thank you, Mary Ann. You have a love affair with that stop sign. Bob?
Thank you very much. I am personally involved in, in the Latino community in several ways in our city. Several years ago, we developed through Oscar Chavez in Santa Rosa, the head, the founder of community, human development, the Bi-National Health Fair. Fellow resident and myself have been putting on the Bi-National Health Fair for about seven years now. That has evolved into now the Cloverdale Cultural Committee, which is also Latino-driven, and I work very hard with them. I also did the volunteer income tax assistance primarily for low-income people, which heavily are Latinos, doing income tax for free of charge and filing for them. So there's more to be done, but they are, they are in our community and they are a large part, they're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy?
Okay, the word that comes to mind is liaison. That's what we need. That's what the school had to do. They had to hire a liaison with the Latin community. One of the problems are that they've come to me and told me, mothers who you see strolling down the street to get their children to school in the mornings, is the safety, especially on the streets. There's signal lights that they need where they can cross the streets and where their children can cross the street safely. Due to the bus cuts with the schools, everyone's walking now. So my thing is, is having someone be a liaison. Bring these parents in, include them, involve them. When they're not afraid to speak, they'll speak.
Keith?
With my occupation, I had a lot of contact with the Hispanic community, with both business members, victims of crimes, children, working in and around the schools. I think one of the biggest things we can do is make the children comfortable with us. As a culture, they aren't comfortable much at the time with us. They think we look down on them. Us just trying to speak their language helps them open up to us and they'll try to speak ours more. So I think working with the kids has a big deal.
Okay. It looks like we're going to have time for about two or three more questions. So I have some questions from the audience. Again, we are going to start off with Jason. So the question is, in the next five years, how would you most like to see Cloverdale viewed by the surrounding communities?
How much time you got? 60 seconds? All right, you got it. You know, in the next five years, we could see Cloverdale, as some of my fellow candidates, or, yeah, fellow candidates have said, on the map, recognizable. I'd like to see Cloverdale be the third, fourth maybe result on Google by the time I've hit CL. That'd be pretty cool, within five years. Really, it's going to be outreach, guys. And, and that's, that's my honest opinion. You're going to hear me beat a dead horse over that. It's, it's marketing and it's outreach. And when we get Cloverdale's name out there and we have people look us up based on the services that we offer, Friday Night Live, Citrus Fair, Granger Hall, anything that you could think of, Performing Arts Center, the Film Festival that went on, people are going to start Googling Cloverdale more and more. So in five years, we're going to be the third result by the time you hit CL.
Jason, thank you. Paula?
Well, I'd like to see the rest of Sonoma County be a little jealous of Cloverdale. You know, we've got this beauty and open space here. And if you've ever lived in some of those more crowded areas, that is really a wonderful thing. So I'd like to see them coming up here just to get away from their busy hectic environment and the high traffic. And also I'd like for the tourism, the tourists who come here to view this as a little island oasis that they can come to, that's very accepting and comfortable and relaxed, and has things for them to do. So that's kind of what I'd like to see for Cloverdale in five years.
Paula, thank you. Melanie?
Well, I think we're already becoming the envy of Sonoma County by people who are in the know. I've been hearing that more and more recently. But I'd like to turn the question around and ask, what are we going to think of ourselves in five years? How are we going to see ourselves in five years? Are we going to have a comprehensive marketing and outreach plan and have implemented smart development and revitalized our downtown and feel good about that? Or are we not going to address our issues? That's what I want to see. I think that's what we, everyone in the room should ask themselves tonight. How do I want to see Cloverdale in five years and how am I going to feel about it? I think we should feel great about it because I think we're going in a, in a very good direction.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
In five years, I would like to see us become financially secure, safe, and culturally rich.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you very much. Throughout my associations, we are the envy of many of the cities, at least via the city council members. They always are asking me, why does things always happen so easily? You never have any fights at your council meetings? And so they're, they're always relatively short, not to past midnight and all of that kind of stuff. So, and we always have good events going on all the time. So we are the envy already, but I see us not stopping. Keep, keep moving forward, more recreation, more events, all that kind of stuff. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Bob, thank you. Sandy?
To see Cloverdale in five years, the one thing that I am concerned, and hopefully in five years, we become more and more solvent in our finances and our repairs. We need to address infrastructure. As far as Cloverdale itself, it is a safe town where people can live here peacefully. That's it.
Thank you. Keith?
I have to agree with Bob. I think Cloverdale is already the envy of most of the county, or many in the county. And the ones that they aren't, they just haven't been here yet. I'd like to see Cloverdale change back from genuinely Cloverdale, which doesn't really tell me a lot, to our old motto, where the vineyards meet the redwoods. That makes people think more of a vision in their mind of what we're all about. Genuinely doesn't say a thing. But I, I think Cloverdale's on the right track. We have a lot going for us and I think we're already the envy of the county.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. Can I actually ask you to repeat the question? Seems to have morphed as it went around. I will make sure I'm answering it correctly.
The question is, in the next five years, how would you most like to have Cloverdale viewed by the surrounding communities?
I think that, looking at it five years down the road, I think we're on the right track to how people view us. When I decided to come here six years ago, someone at work said, "You're not really going to move to Clover-tucky, are you?" And I said, "Really? Because you live in Geyser-Bama, so let's like, leave this alone, right?" So we have a sense of pride as building in town. I think that's why you see eight candidates here running for two seats. This time is exciting and what I would like to see five years down the road is for people to still be excited about what this town is about as we grow and evolve. It's about bringing dollars into town, whether it's cannabis tax, whether it's tourism dollars, whether it's TOT tax, bringing the funds to improve quality of services, to improve roads, and to make this a great place to live, as well as a great place to visit.
Thank you, James. Paula, you're going to start with the next question. Question from the audience, very apropos for many of us. Do you have any plans to assist seniors in the community? If so, what are they?
Oh, yes I do. Seniors have been a part of my wheelhouse for many years. I served on the Council on Aging, Board of Directors for a number of years. Before I went to a full-time writing career, I had an elder care management business. And of late, I have been talking with our supervisor and others about ways that we can bring services to Cloverdale that work to help our seniors age in place. There are so many of us who hope to stay here and there's not quite enough access to the services that they need for in-home help, for varied levels of housing and care. And so I very much would like to work on that area as a city council person. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Melanie?
Well, one of the best things that we can do to help seniors is one of the things that is going to make this community walkable and livable, and that's implementing smart development. When we have a community where it's safe to ride your When we have a community where it's safe to ride your bike and walk up into your upper years, and you have a vibrant economy with several kinds of services and retail opportunities, and several housing for the kinds of jobs that you need to have around when you have an aging population, like caregivers. Caregivers have to have affordable housing available to them. So if we make Cloverdale, if we implement smart development standards, and we make it a walkable, livable community for everyone, it's going to be a great place to live, to age in place.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Well, there happens to be a group right now from the Council on Aging, Mary Ann McBride, came up and had a meeting with myself and Paul Kahler and I think a couple other people, can't remember who, on this age-friendly cities and what we can do in our community for, as a way to implement programs for people who are elderly. And I think sometimes we get too caught up in the fact that there's a lot of really basic things that people need. And one of the things that I brought up to her is that if, just some really simple things, like if somebody is ill and needs to have a caregiver come in, somebody needs to go there and sit, and which I do with a number of the elderly in town, and answer the questions, go through the lists with them, because they often get confused or often will not -- I have to stop again. But they just don't have the wherewithal to do it themselves, so we need to help with that.
Currently, Cloverdale has on the books, there is an assisted living center proposed for our town here. It's been on the books on and off for a number of years. Hopefully, they will carry through with it. That's very important, and we want to see that happen. Also, for the mobile, the safe routes to school would include sidewalks. We're terribly in need of sidewalks in much of our city. That will help them to, help the aging to keep moving, walk the city. It is very walkable, and we see many people every morning walking through my neighborhood, and I'd like to see them be able to go everywhere. Our Alexander Valley Wellness Center is very important, and we want to see that come, and that's very important. So all of these things will help our aging community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy?
My idea would be to assist, the seniors would be to, again, having someone come into their homes and assist them, to work with them. One of the things also was to reach out to the merchants here in town and perhaps see if they could deliver. My mom does not drive. She's 87, and so I do all her running around. I do all her business when regarding Comcast, if they raise it on her, I call them and I fight for her. Now that her legs are giving her problems, it's hard for her to get to the store or to pick up her prescription. And that I would love to see, is merchants working with the city and seniors.
Thank you, Sandy. Keith?
Well, having a disabled elderly parent that lives alone, I understand a lot of what they're dealing with. There aren't many services here in Cloverdale to assist them with simple things as house cleaning or repairing food or that type of thing. As Sandy does, I do most of that for my dad at this point. But it would be nice if there were more services like that, that we encourage to come here, possibly part of the Alexander Valley Medical Center or the group on the aging. But I can tell you, I understand that there isn't a lot of services for them, and we need to do everything we can to encourage it to be here.
Thank you, Keith. James?
I think that the answer is a bit twofold. We see the growth of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Foundation and the expansion of that. That's key. The local economy growing and thriving will bring people and bring businesses to town to make it more accessible. As long as we stay small and we don't grow and we don't expand, things won't expand with us. All those programs for the aging, I grew up in a small town in the East Bay, and in the beginning, my parents had to travel 10, 15, 20 miles to get services. And then as the community grew and expanded, and we saw some expansion, services came to town. So I think that it's all part of the process, and it should be a long-term planning, again, five to 10 years, to make sure we have the services available.
Thank you, James. Jason?
Working for a large health insurer here in Sonoma County. Worked with a lot of senior citizens when they were going through difficult times. And as some of us might remember, we get a senior discount at 55. So I'm not just referring, you know, to the 80-plus community, but generally what is voiced is, "I'm on a fixed income." If I had a nickel for every time I've been informed that somebody is on a fixed income, I'd give it to them because they wouldn't be on a fixed income anymore. And so I think one of the things that we need to address is providing services but not digging into their wallet to get it. And I really mean that. Responsible economic development and bringing in tax dollars for the general fund can help fund the healthcare services that are being referred to, can help bring affordable jobs, affordable housing for their caregivers. But seniors go from way beyond people who are ill and people who are handicapped. There's a fixed income to be considered, and I think the general consensus is, let's not dig too deep into that.
Thank you, Jason. Based on the time, I believe we have one more question, which I will ask from the audience. I would like to apologize to any of you who wrote a question out that we didn't get to. It looks like we're going to have eight questions, maybe a ninth, I'm not sure. We'll watch the timing. We did mix them with audience questions as well as prepared questions. So I'd like to thank you for writing your questions down. If you have an opportunity afterwards, you might want to come up and talk to one or more of the candidates and ask them your questions specifically. And again, we've been able to get four questions from the audience in. The last question, I believe, depends on how fast we are. Melanie, you get to start this one. What do you foresee as the most important issues facing Cloverdale in the next five years?
Well, in the next five years, we're going to be making decisions about, you know, rejiggering our budget based on a very different economy from a post-recession economy. And we're going to have to decide where we need to start our refunding programs first. Our roads are in tough shape, as we heard with the last forum. And we have a number of neglected infrastructure projects that need to be addressed. So we're going to need input from the community in setting those priorities. The other very large issue is cannabis legislation, and it's going to have to be very carefully thought out, again, right-sized for our community. And we need to make sure that we get it right. And of course, one of the unknowns is whether or not Prop 64 is going to pass this year, which I think is going to have a huge impact. So I think an opportunity to work on cannabis legislation is one of the challenges two of us are going to be facing.
Thank you, Melanie. Mary Ann?
That's a hard one for me. There's so many things that need to be done. I think Melanie's correct in the budget issues. We're kind of at the top of the mountain now, finally, after trudging up there for a lot of years now, where we can finally start to rebuild and maybe get somebody in the front end of City Hall that, so we can open back up on Fridays and start to work with -- okay, I'm not going to go into that detail. But the budget issue is probably number one, but I think the Times Square development is probably going to be the most visible thing that's going to happen in Cloverdale in a lot of years. And I think the fact that we are going to put the healthcare district in there, Alexander Valley Healthcare, and the police department, and some retail, I think that's at our gateway. And so that's got to be really carefully done and carefully considered.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Bob?
I think Mary Ann stole my thunder a little bit, but I think the Times Square property is the key to our next five years. And in fact, it's probably going to take five years to accomplish the complete build-out of the Times Square property. It is key to our economic development, which is a huge umbrella of topics, so I won't spend too much time on that. But it sets the tone. Times Square will set the tone on what happens here in Cloverdale.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy?
One of the things I see is attracting more businesses to the town. Also, Measure P, bringing income into the town. But also, the city itself, City Hall, being more accessible to the community. For example, one of the things that I encountered working at the schools collecting developer fees is that they couldn't get a hold of any of the employees, especially on Fridays when people are moving into town. They couldn't get their waters turned on. They would have to wait. That is a problem. We are a public entity. That means we are open five days a week. I've been there. I've been, I took the cuts also with the recession, but I was there five days a week.
Sandy, thank you. Keith?
I believe Times Square is probably going to be the biggest thing that we face in the next five years. We have one opportunity to do it right. If we build a new police station, the medical center, they're going to be there for many years or many generations to come. So getting the right finance, the grants, loans, whatever we need to do to do it right, we need to build the best we can to last us for the generations.
Keith, thank you. James?
In five years, I can hope that we can say, wow, it's been incredible that Times Square has been open for two or three years, and it's a thriving business, as the example for the next business like that that we bring to town. We need to expedite the process so that it makes it easier for projects like Times Square to move forward and to come to fruition. The key is developing new businesses in spots A, where they exist, and B, expediting people as they try to develop new properties, housing, those type of things. That's where we need to be in the next five years.
Thank you, James. Jason?
Five years from now, I'd like to look back and say that the collaboration with city staff, the collaboration with the landowners and the business owners is strong. I'd like to see a ideal where someone who wants to come open a small business here can get an idea of what they can expect before they make any large investments. Working with city staff to ensure that the process is clear and concise so that we may continue to grow. Ease of access is more than just a word, it's an ideal, and it's something that we have to continue to grow. It's alive. And that's what I think that we will be working on in five years, is continuing to appreciate the ease of access and the ability to break ground in Cloverdale and start your dream. Thank you.
Jason, thank you. Paula, you'll be the last one to answer this question.
Well, I take no exception to anything anybody has said here. However, as we continue to develop our community and create opportunities for people, I'm hoping that as we bring in housing at all levels for people and create more jobs, I would also like to see us lose this harness we've had around our neck of being considered an unfriendly-to-business community. I see the beginnings of that changing, but the talk out there is still very negative. And I'd like to see us get to a point where people are going, hey, yeah, things are happening here, and part of the reasoning, reason they're happening is because of the work of city leadership to make sure that we have a friendly community for businesses to start in.
Paula, thank you very much. Candidates, thank you very much for answering all the questions. That was the last question. Now, each candidate will have one minute closing statement to tell us about themselves, something we haven't heard. They have one minute for a closing statement. We'll start with...
How about me?
I think we'll start with Mary Ann, because you got to start with the last question.
Very well, again, I want to thank you all for coming out on this miserable evening and listening to everything we have to say. I don't think there's anybody up here sitting that wouldn't do you guys a good job. I would like to be able to go on and finish some of the projects that I'm in the middle of. If you so feel that you would like to give me your vote, thank you. I think we're on our way, and I think that the next few years are going to be pretty critical. There's some pretty huge decisions that we need to make. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Bob?
Thank you, Ron, and thank you for the moderator and our timekeeper doing, keeping this ship afloat. I appreciate that this evening. I pretty much stand on my experience and my record. I think I've made prudent decisions all along, and some have been not very popular, but they're decisions that I have made with much thought and investigation. I would like to end now this evening by reminding you vote yes on why. Thank you very much. Our library is so important.
Thank you, Bob. Sandy?
Thank you for coming and for giving me this opportunity. I will, what Mary Ann said stands true for myself also. I'm not here to tell you that I have all the answers to your questions, but I'm here to tell you that I will try to get them, and I will do my best. I want to thank you again.
Thank you, Sandy. Keith?
I think we've heard a lot of good ideas from a number of people up here, and there's a lot of good ideas out in the community. I think if you elect me as your city council member, I'm open to talk for different ideas. I've always had an open mind. I'm never always right, and I do a lot of research. But I think I could be a very good candidate for you. I love this city, and I will do the very best that I can to make this one of the greatest cities around.
Keith, thank you. James?
Thank you all for coming this evening, and thank you, the chamber, for hosting this event. I really think that this is an exciting time for this city, and I'm excited to have had the chance to run. I thank the people who have supported me, who have put signs in their yard, who are walking the streets to get the word out. And I look forward to the chance to work with this city, with other council members, and with the community to make this an incredible place to live for everyone, whether you're young, old, Latino, white, whatever you are. This is a place we all love to be, and I'd love to be on this council to help serve the community. Thank you.
James, thank you. Jason?
Thank you. It's been a wild ride. Campaigns are a wild ride. And I'll tell you, I've had a lot of support, and I see some stickers out there with my name on it, and I drive through town and I see some signs in the yard. And I don't get to thank everybody personally, but thank you. A vote for me simply ensures I'm passionate. I got a lot of energy, guys. I got a lot of energy for this. And when I walk around and I do the meet and greets and I shake hands with y'all, the motivation comes easy. You will inspire me, as you've done so far. You will keep me up till 1:30 in the morning, writing emails, making sure my facts are right, because Cloverdale demands it, and Cloverdale expects it, and I plan to give it to you. So if you've liked what you've heard over the last few months, read a little bit of information about me, maybe heard about me from a friend or two, I promise you, that vote will not be wasted. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Paula?
Well, I've enjoyed this evening. I learn new things when I get together with a large group like this. I even met one of the candidates for the first time tonight myself, so it's always a good experience. You know, when it comes to endorsements, I consider the voters of Cloverdale to be the most important endorsement I can get. And going around through the neighborhoods, meeting people, and talking to them about what their concerns are has been a really gratifying experience for me. I won't get to every door in the neighborhood, but I'm doing my darndest to get out there and to learn what I can to do a good job for you. I hope that you will join me and vote I hope that you will join me and vote for me because of my goal to have a vibrant Cloverdale, and that's a city where we all can reap the benefits of the good things that are starting to happen here. It'll bring everybody along, and I would encourage you to go to hashtag Cloverdale, vibrant Cloverdale CA, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Paula, thank you. Melanie?
Well, again, I'd like to thank the chamber, and especially Ron and, and Bonnie, my fellow candidates, and all of you Rutherford folks for coming out tonight for this evening of lively civic and civil engagement. It's been a great event. You know, as we watch our economy slowly recover and we see new opportunities arise, I believe that I bring institutional knowledge along with a fresh perspective, and that's why I'm asking for your vote. So if you'd like more information about me or have specific questions for me, I'd love to talk with you later this evening, or please go to my website, melaniebagby.com, and follow me on social media. On that note, everyone have a wonderful evening, and thanks again for coming.
Melanie, thank you very much. A couple of quick notes, there's a lot of, a lot of decisions to be made. You had a chance to listen to all eight of the candidates tonight. The, this is being videotaped by our, by Alan in the back. Alan, you can wave at everybody, thank you for, for doing this. If you want to relive any of these moments online, if you want to, any of your friends that haven't been able to attend, you can watch the entire 90-minute discussion, and it'll be on a YouTube channel. I see Paul back there. That'll be posted on the website, Paul? Okay, by Wednesday. I will say, I watched the first one because I wasn't able to attend. It was a wonderful job done by the candidates, by Alan and his group. It was very informative, so I encourage you, if you have any questions, want to relive any of the moments, again, or have somebody in the family, friends, that didn't get a chance to see it, go on the city website, and it will be there, it'll be posted on the YouTube cha, what YouTube channel it's on. I also like to thank all the candidates. It's a long evening, but you're used to, some of you are used to spending long evenings at the various committees and that, but we do appreciate you being here on the cold, wet, blustery evening as we go into wintertime. I also like to thank the Chamber Board for putting this on, and the Chamber of Commerce. The, Bonnie, our timer, thank you. I noticed you had fun with your stop sign there. I'd like to thank Nina and Janess for handing out the questions. Again, I'm sorry we didn't get to all the questions. I will say, in reading a lot of the questions and going through it, a lot of the questions were answered, or some of the, some of the comments in here were addressed by, by the candidates throughout the course of their discussion, and we tried to get to them as many as we could. Gene Marzenkowski, I always say the ubiquitous Gene Marzenkowski, everywhere we go, we see you, he's sitting here behind me, and the American Legion for helping us set this up tonight, hosting us here. Thank you, Gene, very much for that. I'd like to, again, thank the candidates, and thank all of you for coming out on a rainy, blustery, cold evening. I know I was having a hard time getting here, trying to keep all my notes dry and umbrellas and wind blowing, and just wondering what was going on. Okay, I get to read the rules. And I get five minutes. And I was, I was just finishing up, Miss Bonnie. So thank you all, and you can stay around and talk to candidates if you'd like, but thank you for coming out.